All right, so it's five o'clock. I'll open the meeting up. Big Canterbury Shaker Village is first time I've been.
Can you have the other page that went with this? And we printed out one page of a copy of the letter. That's all right. I've got the, um, I've got my, if nobody minds me having my laptop.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Very good. You?
Awesome, man.
Good.
It's dark.
It is. It's getting dark.
Seventy tomorrow.
It's like a smack in the face, like it's dark so early.
It certainly is.
All I can say is I wish the town of Canterbury good luck with election day tomorrow.
All of us good luck.
Yes. You too, guys.
Yeah, I guess not necessarily tomorrow that's any concern for the next sixty days.
It's an important part of tomorrow.
Sure enough. All right, so we're going to be talking about a couple of things tonight. Why don't we start with the letter that I just seen today? So we've got that and I would like to have our town attorney take a look at that.
The pilot.
The pilot.
They agree on it, okay?
Yes. I'm sorry. I should have been more specific. So, um, let's see, the rest, we had already acted on some of the properties at the last meeting. Ken, tonight we need to...
I think you agreed the last meeting that all the properties were exempt. And that you were going to abate the taxes. And this is a formal request to abate the taxes and return the $5,009. So that's really what you were waiting for last time. You did have that for June, but you guys just put it in this letter here. So you have the opportunity now to say vote on abating the taxes for 2024. And that you're going to return the $5,009 as per request.
Okay. Any discussion in the select board on this?
So are we making an agreement on the $2,500 or whatever it is for the pilot?
Yes. So you may not have seen it. Aaron, you sent that letter today on the pilot?
Friday.
Okay.
Thursday.
You might not have seen it, yeah.
Yeah.
Not as early as we had hoped.
No worries. Kent, that'll be in your email.
That is, you have, it might be in your packet here, Ken.
This one?
Yep, that's the one. So that's the pilot.
Well, no, that's, well, yes.
That, this is the payment of taxes agreement here. The signature's on the back.
So I thought our town attorney should look at it before we take action.
But tonight you guys can act on the abatement. And you already agreed that the properties are exempt for 2024. And so you can act on the abatement for any past new taxes, penalties, and interest. And then return the $5,009.
Yep. All right. So, Beth, unless you have anything on the abatement, Kent, I'll make a motion that we abate the 2024 taxes in the amount of $5,009 along with any interest and penalties that we had accrued.
So according to information, it should be $7,009. You know, the $5,009 was partial payment that we made, but the overall tax bill was $7,009.
Okay, and we'll retain the pilot.
The $2,000, that train left the station in Akron, April.
Understood. Okay. Do we need to change that motion?
Yes. We'll change it to $7,009.
So I'll make a motion correcting that number to $7,009 along with any interest and penalties. We will refund the $5,009 and keep the $2,000 as a pilot.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Very good.
As soon as we get, we'll get this to our attorneys this week and soon as we hear back, we'll move on.
Yeah, that's fine. And I think in the future, you know, they, for some reason, you need to be here for another meeting to approve the pilot penalty trip down.
Sounds good. Okay. We're making progress.
Oh, yeah. We're making progress. It's better than others.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Before this question committee, who wants to sign stuff? All right, please sign. All right, so I have a, this has got to be an accounts payable.
Yes.
Yep. I have an accounts payable manifest in the amount of $727,800.61. So move.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Trick or treat. There's still some left.
One? I got two.
I don't want to wreck your night here.
I found them on the way out of this home office.
Is that dinner?
That is dinner.
That's hers, probably, then.
Oh, no, that's Beth's. Well, that's actually from Moral Road to me, to the town, to Mandy, to you.
Whoever.
I got a package of mints in my purse, too, if you'd be more sustaining.
All right, so I have a payroll manifest in the amount of $44,725.20. So move.
Ten seconds.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Um, can I ask a question about this? Does that reflect the changes that we, that are, that might be coming that we discussed last meeting?
Uh, no, because I forgot. So, um, the next payroll, which is getting done on Thursday ahead of the Monday holiday, that's going to include the increased wages and the retro pay.
Okay. And that'll be highlighted somewhere? Or if I come in that afternoon, can I say it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The timesheet that'll be in there, we'll have a letter with it explaining the changes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next is something from the DRA. 2024 municipal assessment data certificate?
It's from Mandy. It's to the DRA.
And this is just assessment information that looks in the meeting? Then do we just need to sign?
Just need to sign it.
Cheryl sneaking in.
What?
Yep.
A mask, I think.
Masked neighbor.
All right, next I have a communication from the ZBA asking us to appoint Scott Herrick as an alternate. It says the Canterbury Board of Adjustment is unanimously recommending to the Select Board approval of Scott Herrick as an alternate effective as soon as possible. The Board met with Mr. Herrick this evening to hear his interests and qualifications. Please advise the Board of your decision at your earliest convenience. We don't need a motion. We just sign, right?
Assuming that they're unanimous in their decision that they want him, that's a good thing. I do not have this.
Take that as a very much a positive. Ken Calvin, anything to say on that? Okay.
Other than probably voting wrong since it was unanimous?
No, he seems like a good guy. He's into it, so that's all you can ask.
Absolutely.
How long has he been in town? Do you know? I don't know that, Aaron.
How long?
Probably over, little over ten years, I think.
He's a new person.
Newish. Does it count if, like, Ben ran out of the last letter of my name?
What was it?
You can still see it. It just...
I'm gonna, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
All right. Next is an appointment slip for Alex Young as a historic district commission alternate for three years. Was he already on there or?
He was, he was trying it out, I think, for size.
Oh, so she had it.
Yeah.
Ken, could you check that last appointment slip for a date? But when I just... Right on top.
Yeah, 11/4/24.
Is it there?
Yeah, I filled that one out. I'm not sure if I filled that one.
No, that's why it sort of caught my eye and suddenly had a sinking sensation. I may not have put it on the other one, so.
Date's something that I can fill. Signature's not.
Right. All right. And last item looks like a timber tax for lot... Oh, map 231, Lot 1 and 2, Orchard Road. I think we just signed.
Where is this?
Orchard Road.
Ted, what's that?
Where's Orchard Road?
Let's talk about Orchard Road.
What was that?
Lot 1 and 2?
231, Lot 1 and 2.
I think that's what Ken's also wondering.
I mean, I know it's the orchard. I just don't remember the orchard.
In the orchard itself?
Yep.
Well, it's pretty hairy down the backs.
What is, the first, lot one is the orchard for 59 acres. Lot two is the big portion of 185 acres. So I don't know what they have on that, where they're cutting it or how much. They have to look on there to see. I didn't get a chance to see that.
That's, a lot of that's under conservation land. I didn't even think about that. Can you? Timber harvests on conservation? Yeah, I would think so, but, all right. Have you seen the new house up there? Have you seen how it's done?
No, actually.
Beautiful.
Good.
Very nice.
All right, hit that over. So we've still got some time. Do you want to talk new business?
Minutes?
All right.
Yep.
I elected to print out and copies of the public minutes.
Are they public or not?
Public. Do I remember the non-public?
Yes.
The same as along the website then, or?
It's the same, it's the same not, the same public ones that were emailed out and posted.
There was one comma missing in one place that I figured I talked to you about this morning. It's not worth mentioning, otherwise they were fine.
No, I didn't see it, but I did, so.
Okay, then.
You want to talk about the comma?
No, it was, it was at the, I don't even remember where it was. It was like something, something to, and it should have been comma, to. It, it doesn't, it didn't make any, never mind. So I don't even know where it was.
So I'll move the minutes then?
Yes, I would second that.
All those in favor?
Unamended.
Unamended, exactly. All right, and that brings us to the executive session of October 21st, 2024. Ken, one thing I did see on line 17.
Yeah.
The word personal, I think, is meant to be personnel.
Probably.
And the line 15, the word should be after get.
Yeah.
Should be two words, two u's.
All right. And I can do that?
Yep, and that was all that I saw. Yep. No worries.
Okay.
Looking for a motion. So move.
Uh, seconded.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I go down, Ken, is that okay?
Yeah.
I hope it is, because I did, too.
Okay. All right, let's check it.
Yep. All right, where do you want to go next?
And we already voted to seal those, so we don't have to do that now.
Correct.
Do you have a new business? Help us.
Yep.
Would you like to lighten it?
Yeah, it was what I talked to you, because that asked for, you know, the general.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
My mind's stuck on the budget.
As it should be.
Yep.
So we, our health officer.
Pass those over again.
Our health officer, we had Nadine, our health officer.
I remember, yep.
She was very good at the administrative portion of it. Jeff Hubbell ended up helping out as the deputy health officer because Nadine was having encountered some difficulties getting out to do the same business. When Nadine retired, Jeff took over. Jeff is not as good in the administrative parts of it as, as probably should be. Just, I mean, you know, it works. So we'd like to try and recruit somebody to not take over, but to help out. And maybe, and whether Jeff wants to stay as the health officer, we appoint a deputy to help with administrative portions and all, so. We're going to, uh, unmeeting with Jeff and Joel on Thursday. And we'll have a discussion and then we'll decide on how to move forward with, uh, try to recruit somebody.
Do we anticipate paying them the $100 a year?
We'll come up with some kind of, yeah.
Is that forgetting now, $100?
Yeah, we'll figure it into the budget, yeah.
And does Joel ever go out on calls?
Joel helps with code enforcement portions, because a lot of times the health inspections and code enforcement overlap.
Like if there's a lousy septic or something like that?
If, and, and whatever, whatever, sometimes they overlap. And so, uh, on occasion, they have done some visits with, together and then discussions about the property and whose authority it is they have to, they have to work under.
Does Joel have time in his schedule to pick up that portion of the administrative that hopes isn't comfortable with?
I would probably say no to start with. I don't know.
Is he, is he still helping other towns, Joel, in the area? We started that back in...
We, we have a agreement with Boswell.
Boswell, that's right.
That they're on, one of their, or if they're building inspector, code enforcement needs assistance when they're on vacation or whatever. Joel's over there and they're saying, hey, come here. But that's it. But he still does work sometimes off, too.
Yeah, Joel's a busy guy. I guess I would be a little hesitant about putting multiple eggs in one basket, just in case.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure if he was still helping out at Boswell. Has he had to do that much?
Twice this year, I think. Two or three times, I guess it was. They had, they had two building inspectors and then they went down to one. So whenever that person goes on vacation, it's available to the casters.
And how do you see going about finding a new person, I guess?
We recruit. I'm mad at the town newsletter.
The whole night, the regular, the regular stuff?
Regular ways we recruit people to help out with the town and, um, there are classes that they can take. So, and this is a support network. They have a little support network in the state.
We didn't hear anything from that meeting the other day down in Concord, probably. With the county?
No.
When are we gonna hear, you know?
I don't know. I don't know. The, um, and I guess this can be our own business. Our meeting in Concord with the county and Maravak County commissioners went well, I thought.
Yeah, I did, too.
It was, um, I think it was constructive. I think, you know, everybody seemed to understand there were issues. The town administrator from Boswell sent a note to the business administrator for the county thanking for their time. And they are going to have a work session, the county commissioners are going to have a work session to see if they come up with some, you know, kind of a good case.
And who's Laurie, who's the other woman who's there who usually communicates with us? I want to say her name is Faith, and I don't believe it is. She was at the meeting with us and she often sends out the communications from Boswell.
Katie, that was.
Katie?
She's the county commissioner.
Katie was also going to reach out to the county commissioners and say like, hi, you know, when is the work session? No, I thought that was good. I thought the chair and the commissioner was asking good questions and, oh, yeah, I think it might have to.
And there was, in the Concord monitor, somewhere.
I looked for it. I couldn't find it. It's on the front page.
Yeah.
Just in all the folder.
You can always go to the bottom.
Okay, I think that's new business. I have some, there's some old business. You want to start with the facilities use group?
Sure.
Do you have a copy of that in here or?
Uh, there is a copy of it. Here, what's the question?
Okay, uh, so in the minutes when we talked about this, it was said everything except community sponsored event. And I guess we really don't have a definition of what a community sponsored event is. I guess my thought would be for insurance purposes, and this is what this law allows, insurance purposes, any board or committee or town function, recreation committee, things like that, are all covered under the town liability insurance. Anything else is not. Even though it may be a, um, something good for the community, unless it's a formal activity or a formal group that may be covered under our current policy, so.
So like an ice cream social on the town green is not?
Probably not.
No.
And I know we had, you had talked about the clothing swap. And that is not, it's not like it's sponsored by, unless, unless, I don't know. Is it sponsored by the library or the friends of the library or the, um, is it, is it sponsored by a town group? Or is it just?
I don't know if that's church.
That's the Canterbury, the Netherlands society.
Which is not the town, that's not a town organization. So, anything like that would be required, anything that isn't a town entity would be required to, to get insurance.
So they're using, like, the, the clothing swap is using the town hall. So they needed to get, and there's people...
A rider, whatever, for it.
Library rider, yeah.
So I don't know where these things are coming from, but it's about a half a dozen tables that are unput away over. Lining the side of the seats up there.
That's for the window dressers event?
Oh, yeah, okay.
They have it for a weekend.
Okay. And the other thing is they took the screens off the building here. Do we want them back on? I put them in the back room because they left them in a pile on the table, so.
Unrestable?
Yeah. And the other thing they didn't do was lock the building back up, so.
I would say we should probably put the screens on just because they're, I would think they're less of a chance for them to get damaged if they're actually on the windows instead of out in the back room, because sometimes people move stuff around. That's my thought. Maybe we should probably put it back.
But what do we, what do we need to do about the, um, do we need to decide anything on the facilities thing?
I don't think so.
I just wanted clarification.
We just needed some clarification on that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you guys were, we're good with that.
And we don't need to worry, um, if it...
Can I just see that for a second? Because I was thinking about parking.
The stuff, we probably don't have to say anything about parking, but that's it. It's, I guess I just wonder about, you know, even if they're not town events, if they're parking on town property and there's, if it's a problem.
Do you want to, have to light your video?
Yeah.
It's 5:26.
Yep. Look at this, four minutes early. Come on down, you guys.
You're minutes early and you got five of them.
All right, I have one, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Got enough copies.
Do you need more or?
Um, no, I, unless somebody else comes in, they will get a partial copy.
Because I have one.
Oh, well, you should at least have the updated.
Oh, I do. I have that. Yeah, I have that. That's the whole packet you gave, right?
Yes.
I just think if somebody else needed one of these.
If anybody else walks in, then we need one.
Okay. You want to start or start off?
Yeah.
Just as a review of the 24 budget, there were no major changes. We just met in August.
You're not late, are you?
Nope, nope.
So if anybody else is four minutes early.
We started four minutes early in August.
Don't be sad about me, for goodness sake.
So the 2024, even though it says 2924 at the top of your page, sorry about that. I was in a hurry typing today. No major changes since we met in August. The, all the things I pointed out as far as overages and things, uh, nothing, nothing else. We did get a bill for, um, one of the highway trucks, T1, for $10,000 because fuel pump disintegrated and set a bunch of metal shavings into all the injectors. So fuel pump and all the injectors had to be replaced at the $20,000.
Is that the one we're nursing along first?
Um, no, no.
There's one, there's some people we're nursing along until we can...
Yeah, yeah. No, this one is one of the ones that we, you know, one of the ones that seems to be working fairly good.
Except for that.
Yeah, except for that. So I guess, thing is, moving on to the, to the 2025 operating budget, the wages, uh, the CPI is up and, uh, I'm sorry, again, that's another typo. It was actually up 2.4%. Uh, it was up 2.9 as of August and September's numbers came out. Uh, it was up two point nine as of August and September's numbers came out, and it's two point four. I have information from a lot of different towns around this serve. Most of the towns are, most of the towns are looking at a four percent increase, even though they base their increases on the CPI. And that is purely because of the hiring situation and they're trying to retain their employees that they have. So that is why they're looking at a larger increase in wages versus what the CPI is. As you know, we have three vacancies up in our highway department. We had up until just, uh, a couple of months ago, a vacancy with our police department that we'd have all year. It's, and, and all the other towns around are the same boat. Nobody, I know the town of Northfield actually hired a recruiter to try and recruit, uh, employees. So, uh, that is why they're all looking at about four percent. I did include some wage numbers in your packet. There's a wage survey that we did, uh, with Andover, Chichester, Canterbury, Bunbarton, New Hampton, and Webster. If you look at the first column where Andover is, those highlighted numbers are from the two thousand twenty-three budget. The rest of the numbers are all two thousand twenty-four. So if you look at the third column where Canterbury is and compare it along with the others, we are, again, we're not in bad shape. We're, we're about where I probably think we should be. You know, some, some instances were low, some instances were high, but, um, in, in most places, we're, we're about what we should be paying, uh, in communities our size. And again, I based it on the population, the operating budget, the median income. I tried to find light towns that way. I know one of the things that, that, one of our, one of our indicators that we have, particularly for the fire department and, and for the police department now, is we have Interstate ninety-three, which, uh, gets a lot of attention. Uh, the town of New Hampton has a portion of Interstate ninety-three, so that's why I put it in there. They're close enough with us that, that I thought that was, uh, that was okay. And again, this is just kinda, this is a, uh, this is a conversation starter. You know, nothing is set in stone right now. The selectmen and town meeting has to decide on everything, but, but this is something that we felt, uh, given the, um, potential for the substantial increase or the substantial tax increase in December, which is gonna be carried over next June, July, and December then, we felt it was important to have it be now and give you some, some numbers that, that we're looking at. Just, just, again, conversation starters and, and hopefully some, some kind of direction from you guys on where we should go.
Did Warner have any information? Could use the benchmark off of Warner because their call history, police department and everything used to be really similar to ours.
Correct, and, and, um, their website has not, their, I couldn't get a town report from them for two thousand twenty-three. And I, I didn't get a chance to get ahold of their town administrator. But I will, before, before we really go too far on the budget during the process, I'm gonna get a, get Warner and, and we had Sutton last year, and again, same thing, they didn't have anything. So, uh, I am gonna be sending out through this serve.
Do any of these numbers reflect any bonuses they might be offering for hiring on?
Not on, not on here. Uh, I do know that the city of Lebanon is offering a thirty thousand dollar sign-on bonus for police officers over three years, paid over three years, so, um, and a lot of towns are doing that. They're doing sign-on bonuses and, and, uh, I know some of the, the cities out there, they're looking for help, so...
Is it mostly for police?
Um, I think police and fire are the ones that are getting, they're looking for, for help. Do you need anything else?
Uh...
We got another one of these.
Peter, question, question.
Can we have highway department? Yeah, we have. So one of my concerns is going into winter, we literally have no employees in highway department. There are no applications pending.
So new employees, yeah, one employee.
We have one employee.
Yeah, okay.
We have the road agent.
I just, just wanted to make sure, food still handy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
He's not gonna handle five flowers.
No.
You were talking about contract during the, um...
Yes.
Can we, can we, we have a contract, can we accommodate the wages into twenty twenty-five? Because the wages are, there's a lot of money left in the...
Absolutely.
I didn't anticipate that was all, if you could do that with wages, if you have a contract.
I have the same thought, I don't think so.
No?
But what you could do, you, what you could do is you could just make a, you could make a budget line adjustment and transfer money from the wage line to a different line in the budget. And then if you have a contract in place, you can accommodate. Alternatively, you could just not raise it with taxation this time around and, because that probably also helps.
Yeah.
This would be one of those years where whatever you can do to not raise it is probably a good idea.
Yep. And we are over in some lines. Uh, and we could, and certainly we can use that to offset some of those overages. I know our legal expenses are double in, um, some of the other lines that we roll along.
The other thing you could consider, given the surplus particularly highly, and I know it was that, I was, I know David Foles took like the first vacation he's ever taken.
Yep.
Since he started working for us, and I realize that the backup plan is John and Mary.
And Cal.
So, and I know you weren't there when I was there, so...
Good morning shift, Mary.
Yeah, um, it, you could always use a lot of that for any, you'd use that for highway park and sign-on bonuses. Because it's a one-time expense. It doesn't memorialize and hold forward. And we clearly have ample salary in the budget, ample salary in the budget. You also take the time, you've got seven weeks on a fifth year, but...
Yep.
That would be a possible option.
Yep.
None of the rest of what you said is at all surprising.
Yeah.
You know, I'm now sitting through the school district budget formulation and it's exactly the same across the board. And we'll be hired, you know, even no matter what they're kind of paying, there's open positions that they can hire you. And they're, they're holding fifteen percent right now as their increase for their healthcare cost.
Yep.
Fifteen percent what?
Fifteen percent. The, they're supposed to get real numbers next week. On the healthcare cost going forward. And they've been told that a range between ten and twenty percent increase on...
Yeah, and I'll get the healthcare in a couple of minutes and we, we have some options there, um, so... Yeah, and we can, we can, I think, probably moving that through another line that's over expended is, is a good way to, take care of the, the budget a little bit.
Teacher, teacher. I noticed in this year's budget, we're showing the road agent sixty-nine, five, eighty-two. And on this, uh, wage thing, it's showing seventy-eight, seven fifty-six for the coming year. On this sheet.
Okay. For the comparison?
Yeah, for comparison.
Yeah. Oh.
What are the big difference?
I don't know. Cause I, I made a mistake.
That's a big jump.
I must've put in somebody else's. Sorry about that. Yeah.
So that should be, um...
That should be the sixty-nine, five, eighty-two.
That, Cheryl.
We've also got a rather big number in the hazardous waste date. Looks like a million fifty-eight thousand nine hundred percent.
Where are you, Ken?
Uh, I'm sorry, seven, page seven down at the...
Oh, you're in the P and L?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, in the, in the budget.
It's the suggested by the sound base committee.
Yeah, that, it should be ten thousand dollars.
Right, but you get, is the percentage because of that, the numbers are so much higher?
Correct. There was, there was no budget for it last year, so that's why the percentage is way up. Yeah, we haven't done one in years yet. No, it's been over ten, almost, almost ten years now. Yeah, but that percentage has gotta be wrong.
Well, it went from zero to that.
Yeah, it's gotta be wrong.
Page seven or ten?
Yeah, page seven or ten.
Oh, jeez.
We were at...
Yeah, that's a, that's a misclassification.
Yeah.
So can we back up for half a second? We were worried about snow plowing and having like no class, but we've got four of the five roots covered still, right?
Yeah. We do, we, we have, we have four of the five? We do, we have, um, two seasonal drivers and John, and we have a contract driver that, um, we're gonna, we put an ad out for contract trucks and, um, we had one response, um, and then he called me a couple of weeks ago and said, the truck that he has, doesn't think he's gonna make it. But then I saw him on Friday and he said he just went out and bought a new truck, so...
So he's back.
So he said he should be all set.
So four out of five.
So we have four out of five. Uh, so hopefully, you know, we'll find somebody else interested in being a seasonal plow truck driver or a contract driver and, and how to take care of the five roots. But, but we're in better shape than we thought we were.
Does the town have a truck for it?
We have plenty of trucks, yeah, we just need drivers.
But they're CDL trucks now?
They're CDL trucks.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, that's a skill, you know. And we would rather have somebody that has experience plowing. If they're gonna drive one of the town trucks, like the guy that's the contract truck. You wanna, this, if this is your first year plowing, okay, but don't hit any dirt, any mailboxes, don't dig up dirt roads, so on and so forth.
And pay with your truck.
But it's your, and it's your truck and we don't pay for damages or anything like that. The contract is, is similar to the one the state has where, um, the only we do is provide the fuel and that's it. They have to have a, they have to be fully insured and everything, so... And we get to inspect their equipment to make sure it's, uh, moonworthy and all that, so...
So three roots will be covered with our trucks?
Pardon me?
Three roots will be covered with our trucks?
Three roots will be covered with our trucks and one with a contract truck, yes.
Yes.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to cover the, the fifth one somehow. But if you want our trucks driving, at, at some point, we just have to cover it, split them up a little bit at some point.
The best use of putting the, the...
That too. That is not good for the trucks just to sit there. Uh, okay, if you wanna move on to healthcare, uh, I provided some options. I met with the health trust in the New Hampshire interlocal trust. And at the top of the, the top of the page, the health trust we currently have insurance with, the, the plan at the top, the current plan, the max out of pocket is three thousand and six thousand, and it's a zero deductible. Uh, we, the town currently contributes eighty percent of the cost of the plan, employees twenty percent. They also, uh, offered us a site of service, high deductible, max out of pocket five thousand, ten thousand, and the deductible is three thousand slash nine thousand. So, and you can see that the, the cost differences are, are, are pretty, pretty good. With the current plan, the family plan is forty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-five, and with the high deductible, it's twenty-seven thousand, um, five sixteen. So if the town was to continue funding eighty percent, um, on the high deductible, you know, the town's cost would be twenty-two thousand and then the, um, the employee's cost would be, would be fifty-five hundred. So, one of the things I, I've talked with, with other towns, and one of the things that they're doing is offering two plans, a current high value plan, similar to what we currently have, and they are reducing the amount of, uh, uh, contrib, contribution for the town. So, and then they, they also offer a high deductible and they increase the contribution for the town. So it, it entices the employee to, um, take the lower cost plan where the town actually funds a little bit more of it and reduces the cost for the employee. They also, in some of the high deductible plans, the towns have been funding part of the, part of the deductible too, up to half. So, some options to throw out there. The second, the, the lower part is the, is the interlocal trust, and you can see the price is there. It's, it's, you know, it gives the town options to decide what to do. There's a lot more out there, a lot more options out there. I didn't wanna get too complicated with trying to come up with too many different options for everybody. And I think, um, we don't want to, and, and again, I guess in the interest of retaining our employees to take too big of a drastic step towards our insurance. So, I flow to these. I'm open to suggestions.
Indeed. I, you know, longer years ago, we had looked at creating and funding HSA accounts for the employees where we would have funded it, you know, with an initial square of money. And then they get to keep that, obviously, but that's where they, they, we, we would only offer a high deductible plan, but we would essentially fund the deductible.
Right.
And the analysis is that we didn't do it, and I, because the numbers at the time weren't compelling enough to go through the complication, but the numbers might be compelling enough now.
They are, uh, I think they are.
The difference, the difference between the two plans is...
Right. So the health trust does not offer HSAs, they offer HRAs, the reimbursement. The interlocal trust does offer HSAs. So, but an HSA, the laws changed and the town can only fund up to fifty percent of an HR now, or an HSA, so...
But you could fund, you could, you could also just fund the deductible.
Correct, correct, yeah.
The HSA has tax and other implications.
Yes.
So does funding the deductible, but...
Right, yeah.
To some degree, but it seems like if you could set up a high deductible plan and then take the pain of that plan away from the employees by, by dealing with the deductible, that there may be a, an opportunity to realize its own significance.
Yeah, and that's why, like, you can look at the sheet and I, I looked at seventy percent contribution from the town and then thirty percent contribution from the employee, just to give a couple of different numbers in there to show what the differences are as far as contribution rates. And then you can see what the deductibles are and if the town chose to fund deductibles, combination, whatever, however, I think it's just something that, that worth, worth investigating.
Do you know what other towns are used, if there are any of our using interlo, interlocal?
Yes, so I actually have a, um, New Hampton did a, did a, a survey. Is this in there?
It is in your packet.
So, New Hampton did a survey of healthcare for all the fourteen different towns.
Is it not in there?
Yeah.
And, um, most of them are health trust. Uh, Sandown has interlocal trust. Milton has school care, Cigna. Um, and then there's some NAs, which I don't know what the NAs are. But this is what New Hampton gave us. They did a survey, so it shows, shows, uh, what the percentage of increases were this year. And as, as Bob said, um, I will say, uh, when I talk to the health trust, the high deductible plans, uh, those are the ones that went up seventeen percent, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen percent. The current plan that we had, uh, went up seven percent. That's a seven percent, the numbers here are two thousand twenty-five numbers. And those are, that was a seven percent increase over two thousand twenty-four. They're bumping up the high deductible rates because a lot of people are moving to them. So just like anything else, if the market demands, uh, on a, on a particular item, then that price is probably gonna go up a little bit, so...
The cynical side of me also says that the reason the big plan only went up seven points is because they're already kind of at the limit because they have to provide care for a certain amount of money that they pull in.
That's...
They're already charging you, uh, quite a bit.
Yeah, they are, they are, yeah.
They are.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you look at the difference between these two and, and it's crazy, crazy, crazy.
I just wondered if they were happy with the general question.
I, I can contact Sandown and find out. And I can ask the interlocal trust for, uh, other towns they, they provide coverage to.
But is the difference enough to... But is the difference enough to, you know, there's a certain amount of hassle to switch from.
And then that was, I know we had looked at the interlocal trust a couple of years ago and the rates were a little less than the health trust, but it wasn't enough for us to say, we're gonna make the change because it requires a change of the employees as well as administration and we just didn't think that, that the cost difference was, was enough to make it, make it worth our while.
And you have to check condition coverage and make sure who's in the plan, who's in that word, who's not, and.
They provide, and they have two different providers too, so um.
The alternate, the alt, last time we went down the alternate plan route, there were no, there were no paramedic county doctors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
That's not helpful.
Ken, um, how many employees are we currently in insurance? So we have, where am I, my little sticky note? I'm showing it out.
It's yellow.
I hope I have it.
I know it's yellow.
Oh, what did I do with it? That's what, you.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't enough.
Right, it was just on timer, so there's.
Yeah. We, I think we, I think we currently have five people on, on insurance.
Well, there was five, oh, there it is.
Nope, nope.
There was five and then, but then there was the, the, the specter, shall we say, of covering the people who weren't having enough money to cover people who weren't currently on the plan but who might need to be.
Right.
So a certain amount of the people who aren't on the plan, like if their, if their spouse.
Yeah.
Does, it doesn't cover them anymore or they changed jobs or something died.
Yeah, we have five, five people on insurance.
So a sixth is gonna be for the library.
So the library is gonna have, add one for two thousand twenty-five.
So another full-time employee?
Yes, yep, um.
Originally?
In addition to what they have for twenty-four?
Pardon me?
And then maybe that's in addition to twenty, twenty-four.
That's the, in addition to twenty-four, yeah.
So if they're doing that, are they gonna, is that also gonna include the retirees?
No, no, just for healthcare. Um.
How do you do that?
Yeah, how's that work?
Sure.
Personally, I can't see three full-time employees.
Oh, I have it right here, so. Right now, there's two on the family plan, uh and four on the single plan. Um, for, we actually have eligible if you count vacancies and we do a payout for people that don't take insurance. Um, the police department had four, the highway department had four, the library two, which is three and, and um twenty-five. Uh the town office is three and uh we had a request for a fourth one, so for two thousand twenty-five. So um, that's, that's what we're looking at. Right now, we have five, but we actually, four, eight, uh ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Thirteen are eligible right now and we already have five that are taking it.
That's just for full-time employees.
That is for, that is, we have two part-time employees in the town office that are still getting at their grandfather.
Right, but the rest are gonna be full-time?
The rest are full-time.
Nobody from the fire department?
Nobody from the fire department.
We have no full-time employees.
No full-time employees, it's per diem and, and one part-time.
So you came up with common?
Pardon me?
So you came up with.
Thirteen full are eligible. Four for the police department, where none of them are taking it right now.
All right.
The fire department has zero, the highway department has four slots.
Eight.
The library has two, it's ten.
Ten.
The town office has three, so.
Oh, did that untie?
Thirteen, yep, yep, yep.
So that's eligible but not.
That's eligible but not taking it right now. And again, next year, the library's gonna have one more and we had a request for one more at the town office.
What's the buyout?
Five thousand.
Not a bad buyout.
Well, considering a family plan is forty-two thousand, they, I think it's pretty worth it for the town to do that. Yep.
But we do have to have a certain amount uh in reserve for, in case things change.
Correct, that's the other thing, we have been funding our insurance at actual numbers and we really should be funding it for potential also, because if somebody decides, oh, we're not gonna take the payout anymore or my, my, my partner's insurance, my partner changed jobs and they're not, they're not getting insurance, so I need town insurance now and oh by the way, it's a family plan, um, we, we really should fund a little bit, we should take that into consideration when we, when we do our budgeting. Particularly where we have three vacancies at the highway department, if we were to hire and all three needed the family plan, that would hurt.
I think you have to budget for it.
Yeah, we do.
At the end of the year, you'll see what you have to have. It's like a race, but I think you gotta budget, or at least budget on a range, right?
Yeah, and that's what we figured, on, on a range, yeah.
Because if you do a partial year higher and someone makes a change, it's not a full year amount, but you know, I would definitely not did it put it by the bone with six people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have two general questions, um what is, are, as a town, are we restricted to certain health providers? Like I've never heard of these two and, you know, so we can.
We are not restricted to health providers, we could go to the open market, we could go to a private market, we have been with the health trust because at, at the time, their rates were the best.
My second question is if we do what we were discussing before of switching or offering the high deductible and even considering funding some or all of people's deductible to help them meet that, can we do that through a pool so that there's money there and we only spend what we need to spend, it doesn't get allocated to each person?
So is that, that would be a HRA where the town administers it?
That would be.
The HSA is administered by the employee.
Yep.
Um, and that's, we give each, an HSA, you give the employee, here's your five thousand dollars and you spend it on whatever, your co-pays, your um, whatever, whatever bills you want that the insurance doesn't cover. An HRA is a reimbursement plan where the town funds it and then says, yes, we will reimburse you this, these costs for this, this and this.
And how much of an extra headache is it for a town to administer that? I have no idea.
Um, since we have one administrative assistant, who knows? I mean, we don't have a lot of employees, but at the same time, it's, it is more administrative work, so. Um, it would, I think it would be probably better to say, we will pay half of your deductible and, and that's, that's how we, we bring it, bring issue bill and we pay you the, half of the deductible, or whatever we decide.
With staff hours always being kind of tapped out, it seems more reasonable.
But that would be, that would be easiest as far as administratively, you know.
I have another question for, on the police chief salary, would Mike ever go over this year?
Yes.
But I thought when Mike left, there was that short period of time that Justin was using his old salary. I thought, I thought when Mike left, he worked it out, so he's gonna be like, and even, he's gonna be getting more money.
So we put that in as a placeholder only, that's, that was, it's a placeholder. We haven't looked at, I, I, if you look at the spreadsheet where it gives the chief's numbers, that eighty thousand is just a placeholder.
No, I mean, the one that we've already spent this year.
Oh, on what we spent?
Yeah.
What, what's the question again?
We're, we're working ninety-eight, thirty percent on the police chief's salary.
Yep, so.
But I thought that it was gonna work out, we thought when Mike left.
So because it's a bottom line budget, we're, we're gonna pay out the chief because it's the chief's salary, we're just paying it out.
Right.
And when it, when we expended it all because Justin's full-time, then there's plenty in the wage line where he was getting paid from before that we, that we pay for that.
Mike was part-time, Justin's full-time, so that's what you're seeing.
But Justin just took over Mike's salary.
Correct.
So it should have been seamless.
And that's, that's just for tracking what we pay the police chief. Um.
Right.
Our current police chief.
Right.
We're not gonna take, we are, we weren't taking Justin's, I guess, pay as a chief out of the wage line. We were gonna expend the chief's line and then if we needed to, we would take money out of, of that wage line.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but the, the time from March until May.
Yep.
We had no chief and Justin was getting paid under the wages, this is the officer wages.
Yep.
So there's two months there. That um, I just think there should be more money left in the police chief's.
I thought there wasn't a gap in.
No, because yeah, there, yeah, the chief left and Justin was appointed within a couple of weeks.
He got vacation payouts, so I think that would have been that line.
Chief, the chief got vacation. Yeah, chief will rack up vacation.
Yeah, that's what did it.
Yeah, there was not a gap between chiefs.
Like March and May.
No, 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 um, well, I don't know, I'd have to walk in. Well, no, because Mike literally left the day before he appointed Justin.
Okay.
Now he resigned, I think we're talking weeks, Jim.
Oh, I thought it was like.
Nine months.
Cause I thought Mike left in March.
No, because I, actually I remember you and I talking about getting the interview, you know, ideally when Mike was still here. We just missed.
Just missed that.
Yeah. Yeah, by a day.
There was, there was a buyout that was coming.
Yeah.
I was like, it should have been.
Probably the, the vacation pay, yeah, yeah.
What page are you looking at, Edward?
On, on the budget, that's the actual.
Yeah, yeah.
On page six. The police chief's salary is at ninety-eight, twenty-five percent.
Oh, okay, see it.
Can I, can I keep, can I keep going?
Sure.
What happened to the planning board, we, the planning board secretary, we just.
Yeah, what line are you looking at?
Uh, forty-one, nine, page four.
Yep.
Forty-one, nine, one, point two.
Thank you. Yeah, so we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars and we're at ten thousand dollars expended already.
I don't have that one.
There was.
I don't have.
Oh.
Oh, the P and L?
Yeah, I did not make enough P and L.
Go on, I got, I got an extra one here.
I'll get there in a minute.
Oh, of course you can, thank you.
There was a period of time uh earlier this spring when the planning board um was having, working with the attorneys and a lot of time was being spent by the secretary and the chair on a whole bunch of different things, um, which caused the planning board secretary to put in a lot and a lot of extra hours. Um, and then there was the changeover when Lois left for Michelle and there was some training, so we were paying both of them.
Oh, okay.
Um, at the same time.
But it looks like the two lines are gonna offset each other, right, because you're on the budget, hard lane, he's minister.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but that's why the overage is up, if the uh planning board secretary is. Um, there were a lot of complicated issues in the planning board earlier this spring, uh that's why the legal bill doubled, so um.
My last question, the backhoe lease is in, in the highway department budget, could that be in the long-term debt?
It should be, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like the one who used to do this.
I was gonna say, it sounds like the voice of conspiracy.
Ken, what's the election, the miscellaneous supplies that's so high is that for?
So uh miscellaneous supplies for elections.
For the cage.
Again, because uh with multiple elections this year and um we have um it's, it's, we have to feed our, our staff and um just like everything else, the cost of food and everything has gone up, so it's one of those things, and we spend extra hours. Um, and either the, the elections have taken a lot more time this year than counting and everything else, so that is, that is part of the reason.
Yes, right.
Oh, that's right too, is, is, I didn't even look at that, uh we did get a grant, um, yes, that, I, I just looked at the line here.
To offset that in particular?
Yeah, uh, yes.
I thought it was for a case of Prozac and aerosol form.
Uh, yeah, well, wait a minute, um. I don't know if that's in there, no, I don't think that's in there.
Well, it's not, they're, they're over by two thousand.
But we received a grant after we spent it.
Okay, okay, so they bought a, uh, they got a grant for money to buy a secure storage container for the voting machine and um ballots and that stuff and that was a grant, so that would, so I think part of that is, is that, so the expense for that, and we got the grant, so it's gonna offset.
So we'll get that back.
Under miscellaneous uh funds, uh you'll see it in there.
And Sam found a cage?
We did find a cage, yes, yes.
And we'll have that for this election?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
Is that going down the basement?
Not going to basement for now, um, yes, yeah.
Have you had, do you see the date yet for the, um, setting the tax rate?
The what?
Setting the tax rate?
No, we have not, no.
I called um our D R A rep today, cause we're waiting on the D R A to give Mandy the utility.
Oh, the utility value.
Utility value stuff so that she can give them that M S one so that they can give us the tax rate, but everything else is set.
Hey, they haven't set, they haven't set the final school tax rate, they have, they have now, the state hasn't, the state hasn't done their final. Running the number of counts, so once they do that, then they can start doing it. It should be like a week.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be a week.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I got it, yeah, there's fifteenth, I think, is when they're.
Are there any warrant articles that are proposed?
Um, let me get through the rest of the operating budget and then we'll move on to warrant articles.
Okay.
Uh, just on the highlight of the budget summary page, um, the overtime is up this year, or proposed overtime is up this year. Um, because they have been very busy and um it seems like every day the police chief comes in and tells me that there's another uh large case they've, they've been working with. In the last two months, they've had cases that have included the FBI, DEA and um multiple jurisdictions. So they are working a whole bunch of overtime this year and he figured he better, he'd rather be safe than sorry next year.
But it's not necessarily the big cases, correct, because every time he comes in, makes his report, all the calls and call line and everything is way up. Does that contribute to that?
And, 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 and yeah, and the chief has said, they have some um very active patrol officers that uh the numbers are up and they're making, handling a lot more calls and calls to service and things like that, so. But the overtime is really coming from the, the big cases, yeah.
Does any money come from these other agencies that are, you think, are?
Probably not, probably not.
FBI doesn't ship it, come on.
Yeah, probably not.
So if something happens and we find ourselves looking for illegals and stuff in our town, are we gonna pay for that?
I, I, I don't know, Tyson, this is, these have been some cases, uh, one involved the fish and game department and then two are active investigations that, that they can't comment on other than there have been multiple jurisdictions, so. Um, involved and they've been working a lot overtime, so. Um, the dispatch is down, last year included money for a system upgrade, um, the fire department, the wages, the hourly wage is up for a firefighter, paramedic, um. So we have, the, the part-time employee we have is a firefighter, paramedic, uh, which our last employee was a firefighter E and T. So paramedics make more money, um, you can't hire paramedics now, can't find them. Um, I know um the city Concord has an ongoing ad uh that is, they're, they're looking for paramedics all the time. They don't have enough, same thing with other, other towns and cities. Uh, so the chief asked to boost the wage line a little bit, um, and, and, but there's no healthcare retirement costs, so the bottom line is down. Uh, the volunteer reimbursement is up a little bit, he has uh um. Uh, the volunteer reimbursement is up a little bit, he has, uh, um, more active members on the department, um, the calls they're getting, they're getting two to three people on most calls now, which is, and they, they pay on, on, based on activity, so that's why that's up. Um, again, the highway, um, the wages, we're gonna try and figure out what we're gonna do with wages. Uh, T one repairs were up, the grader repairs are down considerably, cause we got a brand new grader.
Yeah.
And it's under warranty, so, um, solid waste. They would like to do a hazardous, the committee would like to do a hazardous waste day this year, the cost is just a little over ten thousand dollars. So, uh, that's why, it's in the operating budget, cause we have that line, um, I know, I know we've gone back and forth on this, but it should be a warrant article, it should be in the operating line. We've had it on the operating line and we funded it with a dollar forever and the last one, I think, was eight years ago.
It was a long time ago.
Eight, nine years ago.
Certainly from the town's perspective and the citizenry, it's probably a good idea to build.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if memory serves, the last one cost us fourteen thousand dollars, so I'm wondering why they pay ten thousand as much?
Yeah.
So we have, um, so we have a choice, um, and it depends, basically, it depends on what they accept for units. Um, and it's a setup fee of twenty-three hundred and forty dollars, and then we have a choice, if we go two hundred and fifty units, the cost is, uh, the total cost is ten thousand five ninety, if we go two hundred units, the, the total cost is eighty, eighty-nine forty. If we go a hundred and fifty units, it's seventy-two ninety, um.
What's a unit?
Well, I, I.
Units are barrels, like lead, and they're gonna fill them until they're full, so that would give us.
And, and what they do is, once they're, once they reach the, the full number of units, they don't accept anymore. So we encourage people to come early and.
Cheaper to buy.
That ends up on the road on the way home.
And bag it.
What's that?
Couldn't you circumvent it and kind of be a little ghetto and just buy like safety absorbent and you can get rid of paint cheaper that way than trying to?
Well, they do not take, they do not take, um, uh, any latex paint, um, they only take oil-based paint and they only take hazardous materials, so thinner, things like that, um.
Pesticides.
Yeah, pesticides, things like that, that's all they take, they will not take anything that's, that you can recycle yourself. So latex paint, you can put kitty litter in it, you can do sweetie dry, something like that, and then throw it in the regular waste chain, so. Um, but that, the company looks at what their people are bringing in and if they, if it's something that can be recycled without going in there, then they say, no, this, this goes, you have to take this and recycle it yourself.
Cause the majority of products now are, they're pretty disposable.
A lot of products are.
Well, but I mean, you take all the paint, throw it on a piece of plywood and let it dry, that's not disposable. You know, I'm just thinking, if you're trying to.
It is, it saves me, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got a construction debris bin, save some plywood and get rid of some water paint.
Yep, there's ways to save a little money, yes, there is, yeah.
Well, which is why maybe ten thousand is fine, well, so what happened to the point, by the last time we got killed? We got killed because we hadn't had one forever and stuff came out of every barn.
Yeah, 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 no, my question was, if, if you say, okay, um, we want to, uh, contract with you for two hundred and fifty units and we only fill up two hundred units, do they still charge us or do we have to, will they? Do you have to, do, do you, do you get charged for what you contracted or how much you filled?
Units you fill.
Okay, so they'll bring two hundred and fifty now or whatever?
They'll, they'll, they will have a capacity of two hundred and fifty units.
And if they only use a hundred and fifty?
If they don't fill it, then we get billed on what we fill.
Okay, perfect.
I don't think this would be a problem. I think you can fill very quickly.
I do too.
So do you remember?
You end up shutting it down at eleven in the morning, you're like, I want a grant.
Do you remember, Bob, and when the, the blast happened, how many units we filled?
They didn't calculate it like that and we didn't price it like that, and it was more open-ended, there was no not to exceed and, uh, it was considerably more than we anticipated at the time.
Yeah, when I thought.
Still.
And we don't cha, we're not charging for this, because when I've gone to hazardous waste things before in other towns, I pay to, a fee, not a lot perhaps, but.
That, we could try.
I mean, we had, the idea was to get the stuff.
To get this, yeah.
Get the stuff out of the, like, potential waste stream and, or out of, from a garage, a barn, a ditch, or whatever my plan, so.
I was willing to pay, I mean, if you, you charge for what, ten bucks a car, a car?
But it would stop a lot of people, you know, have stuff to get.
Yeah.
Just on the principle.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We had to go to Montenboro to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, that's where I went too.
All right. Um.
Okay.
The Petticoat Rescue, uh, just as a, kind of a heads up, um, their operating budget was five hundred and thirty-nine thousand this year. We met with, we've been meeting with them over, uh, the whole program and working with the county commissioners to try and get the county to, to come up with some money. Uh, as part of that, the chief of Petticoat Rescue said he is potentially looking at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget next year versus the five hundred and thirty-nine thousand this year.
What's our percentage of the total?
They do it based on population, so we, I'd have to look at, I didn't run the numbers for seven fifty, uh, but it's based on population.
Who are they, the, us, Boswell and Salisbury?
Boswell, Salisbury, Hanbury.
Salisbury can backhoe?
So Salisbury were trying to go negotiating on their own with Petticoat Rescue and it never went anywhere. Um, we met with the county commissioners last Monday.
Yeah.
Uh, Beth and Kent and myself were there, uh, Boswell, Salisbury did not attend, um. The, the county facilities in Boswell account for thirty percent of the call line, um, for Petticoat Rescue. So we were asking the county commissioners, since the towns submit a subsidy, maybe they could submit some kind of subsidy also, contribute some kind of subsidy based on their call line. Uh, it's gotten to the point where Petticoat Rescue is, is considering a second ambulance, to staff a second ambulance, uh, because of the call line. So.
Are they opposed to contribution?
They didn't, they really, there was a lot of good questions, it was a very good meeting, it was, uh, constructive questions. They are gonna have a work session to determine what their course of action is. And, and I will say, the conversation went everywhere from, from what it is today to a county Y D M S system versus individual departments and just, I, it was, it was kind of a, just a big conversation about the whole thing. So they're gonna have a work session, um, I think, you know, we'll see, I, I don't see a lot of big changes coming, but, but at least it generates a conversation.
County Y D M S would put us in with about forty-five of the other states, I would say, right Scott, about forty-eight or nine of them?
Yes, especially in the southeastern United States, southwestern United States, very common, so. Uh, Cheshire County in New Hampshire has tried for EMS system and it hasn't worked out really well. Uh, just because of some of the intricacies of the contracts that are in place, that were in place at the time and, um, it's, it hasn't, it's a work in progress, I don't know if it will be successful or not.
Certainly won't be for next year.
Yeah.
Well, for response time, it certainly makes a lot of sense, but.
Yeah, that's, um, and then, again, as far as the summary, uh, the library was adding one employee for healthcare, so that was just kind of a, in the, in the operating lines you look at, those were the, the biggest. We haven't done our executive budget yet, I apologize, we're tied up with Petticoat Rescue and a bunch of other things going on, so. Our executive line is hanging.
So, uh, Ken, just to be clear, the library isn't adding one employee with healthcare, they're.
They're adding, they're asking.
Adding healthcare to one of their employees that's already there.
Correct, yes.
So it's going from part-time to full-time, this person?
To fund healthcare, correct, yeah.
But not a whole new person at the library?
Lot of additional employee, but their, their employee, one of the part-time employees is moving to full-time orders in order to get healthcare.
So basically we have forty thousand dollars, yeah, increase in.
And if you look at that budget, yes.
If it's a ten percent.
Will it be a family plan, you know?
Party.
Will it be a family plan?
I don't know. I don't know.
Huge.
Um, at some point, are we gonna do the whole department conversations with the budget committee or?
Yes.
You guys want us, I assume you guys want us along for that?
Yeah, and this was, this was really, Scott wanted to meet, we typically don't meet until December and Scott wanted to do this because of, uh, increase in the school portion of the tax rate and try and get out ahead of things a little bit, um, and get some insight from you guys on, on thoughts. Uh, warrant articles, um, I know of one petition warrant article that is out there for, uh, a compactor instead of a packer truck at the transfer station, however, that, uh, that is really not a feasible warrant article, because it would require three-phase power, which we don't have. Uh, we do have a variable speed drive for the baler that's up there that really needed three phases, but Unitil has said that when, when we submitted the, the numbers, the kilowatts or the, or the, the amps that draw for the that baler, they said they could support that, but if we tried to put another variable speed drive up there, the, the infrastructure that they put in that is new, they had to actually, uh, run new lines, uh, was not, would not work for, for that baler, for the, for the compactor. It's a big enough unit, requires enough horsepower that they don't feel they have enough power for the variable speed drive.
It, it, what are they solving for? Uh, I mean, I know that, that the packer truck is getting old and someday it will need to be replaced and at that time it would, in ecological sense, replace it. The compactor roll off rather than buy a packer truck, or another garbage truck, but what are they solving, what are they solving, what is it solving for right now?
Just the, uh, machine running the whole time.
And the fumes.
The fumes, yeah.
Okay.
Got it. And, uh, um, yeah, and the, the, right, as Ken said, the, the truck idling, the new fuel and, um, things like that, but they're, um, so that's, that's the fun, and then, again, it's a, I, I talked to the person that's wants to do this and, and they're gonna do a petition warrant, so. But that is the only, only thing that's out there, other than the, uh, garage at the Sam Lake House. Um, we, with our new land use, uh, employee, they are now in the office or in the room where the files have been stored, along with the building inspector, um, that room is filled up, it's overflowing. Um, we are trying to, we have a municipal records committee that is meeting once every couple of weeks to try and solve the problem of our records, but there are records that have to be kept, paper records have to be kept by law by the town and we don't have the space for it. Um, and I know we have a fairly sizable basement, but, um, it's not A D A compliant and it is not really the best place to store paper records that you want kept.
Dry.
Dry and forever. Um, part of the committee, when we built the, when we renovated the Sam Lake House was that the future of the garage was going to be for future long-term storage of paper records and I have two estimates right now from local contractors to do that. We have a fairly sizable chunk of money that's, um, in the county reserve account that can only be used for the Sam Lake House, um, we're gonna have sixty-something thousand dollars in it, um, with another, then we'll be getting ten, eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars every year. Um, and the estimates are in the seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollar range. That's for, uh, H V A C, all, all new roof, new windows, new siding, all that.
What's up with lead abatement?
And that would be part of it, we'd have to look into that.
You're talking twenty, twenty grandish lead.
To determine whether we need to do a abatement on it.
So it's not an occupied structure, so if there's lead paint on it, you could just cover it.
Well, the problem is, a lot of the, a lot of the, um, trim and siding is rotten, is rotten, so we'd have to replace it. So we'd have to take it off, yeah.
You don't have to remove the lead paint, you just.
Correct, we'd have to, we'd have to plastic it and remove it, you know, uh.
Buy the lead license to mitigate.
Yeah, contractors have lead licenses, every, a lot of contractors have lead licenses.
But you can largely sell funding project.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't carry lead because they don't wanna pull it once, once it touches the wall.
But there are contractors out there that, that carry it.
We didn't, we didn't do any lead, we didn't do lead, when we tore down the old Sam Lake house.
So when you demolish a building, the laws are different. If you completely tore it down, you would not have to do a payment on it.
What would the cost be to build it from scratch versus trying to retrofit?
I don't know, I, I don't know what the cost, build it from, is to tear it down.
Like, by the time you take all the rotten junk off, what are you saving?
I don't know, that's, my question is, it's a one-stall garage, you want eighty thousand dollars to build a one-stall garage? It seems kind of excessive to me.
Not to, not to build, but to retrofit it.
Well, that's, yeah, just renovate, I don't know what it would cost to build a brand-new one.
It seems like it would be easier and cleaner, so can we find out?
I can find out, sure.
It seems like it would be a good number to have.
Well, that's what hap, that was how the math worked for the Sam Lake house.
I know, that's what I mean.
Build a new one and look like it.
It was cheaper to tear down and build a brand-new building than it was to try and renovate it.
So does the same hold true for the same, like, even though that's the only, I mean.
I can get some estimates.
I would say the estimates are worth it and the historic district commission is certainly gonna lay a way in on that.
Now, would we be able to, uh, H D C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause if that's the last remaining original piece of the Sam Lake property, who knows?
And understand that the H D C can have an advisory opinion on it, but they can't, they can't tell you what to do.
No, no, of course, but it's.
It's our problems.
It's always nice to ask. And discussion.
It's worth, it's worth understanding, um, the depth from their perspective, what they think it is or isn't.
But I think that would be a very interesting number to see.
Can I add another little thought on that building up there? And that is that we've got a propane tank that's staying out on the side of the building, right up next to it and we've got water dropping on it and it's turning green behind the, the tank.
So a diverter on the roof or something?
Well, I don't know if you're gonna be able to with a slate roof. It's either that or move it around the corner so we don't have the water dropping on it or move it away so that the water can drop behind it.
So the propane tank is for the emergency generator?
Yeah.
And it has to be within a certain amount of distance of the generator because of the piping size? So I'd have to, we'd have to ask the propane people to come there and look at it.
Okay. Small projects aside, right, how can the budget committee best help you? Cause I think, if I look at the big picture, right, um, you know, we need to, uh, obviously maintain essential service delivery when we have a town, right, with the recent fire, and then we have, we should really be trying to restore the town's capabilities with regard to the highway department and, you know, yeah, we could run on different contracted employees, but the town loses its flexibility when that happens and it loses its emergency support, you know, it's, we've had a number of, uh, quite changing type extreme weather events in other areas where having a highway department really enables the town to do a lot that otherwise might not be able to do with a contracted department. So I think, I think assembling a compelling package of compensation and benefits to address the hiring and the retention issue, um, is probably project one. Whether it all happens in one year or not, I don't know, but I think you really need to look at, you know, trying to resolve this issue, everyone's having the same challenge, so what can you do?
Yeah, and, you know, putting my other hat on, um, we have so many vacancies in the state, you know, high-paying jobs with excellent benefits, the state police are running seventy-five to eighty or more vacancies and have been for years, um, they just can't find people that, that wanna take those positions anymore. Um, I see us, the select board, as sort of walking a tightrope this year for town to year because I, I certainly think that, um, the fact that we have had little to no interest in these highway department jobs is probably a message we should listen to. Um, we've, we've gotta do something to attract and keep employees and that's the other, uh, the other all-important thing is, once we've got them, we've gotta keep them. And, um, the highway department in particular, that's been an issue for us, is keeping them. So I, I think you're right, Bob, I, I agree anyway, that job one is, how do we get our ranks filled back up and then how do we keep those ranks filled? Because the, the valued employees are the ones with the experience that know the talent. And we should strive to keep them.
But how do you see the budget committee actually helping with that task?
Allocating more money.
Well, I think the budget...
Throwing money at it doesn't even seem to be helping the problem.
Well, yeah, well, it's gotta be, part of it is to come up with a compelling package, then identify the people that make the attractive budget. So it, and so I think where the budget committee can come in and support the board is to take a much harder line, this is gonna be a phased process, right? But if that's the priority you must address for the community, then you take a much harder line on, on nice-to-have things that are in the budget or other projects or other things that you don't necessarily need to do. And it might mean that other aspects of the town, if we're, if we're gonna put more funds towards, you know, a compelling employment package, there may be other things that we have to do less of.
You know, and I, I think certainly, town meeting in 2025, I think, you know, we're gonna have a group there that has been stunned by this sudden increase. While I hope we've, we've helped kind of spread the word, I'm not sure everybody's gotten it yet. So I think there'll be people that will open their tax bills and just be shocked. So I think we need to be cognizant of that as we craft this budget.
Absolutely.
Well, and going forward too, just thinking about what you had said, Ken, about other towns hiring a recruiter, is that, is that kind of person worth the money to help us come up with a package and actually have the, have the broader scope to look for the people that might, to actually put the package in front of? We're even having trouble, I think, finding people to look at them, look at the numbers or what we're offering. And I think we're gonna have to spend a little bit of time looking outside the box. Can we afford, or do we have the wherewithal to do something like offer housing? Is that something that's going to get somebody where a sign-on bonus won't? I don't know, but I don't know if the budget committee has the, you know, you've got the brainpower to look into that, but if you have the time and the want to, that might be a part of the package too.
One of the ideas that was brought forward, that brought up, was ask the NHL to have a job fair. I mean, we're certainly not the only municipality that has this problem. And maybe, maybe they could spot some kind of job fair or something like that that at least would attract a, a larger crowd, so to speak. I don't know if I wanna be in competition with other bunch of towns.
No, I bet that idea almost works. Are they having the same issue as us or are they actually able to keep their people?
Again, that's, they hired, Northfield hired a recruiter to, to, to...
Not even need jobs.
And how did that go though?
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to get a hold of it, talk to them about it. It was mentioned, it was actually mentioned last week at our meeting with the college commissioners, that, that Northfield hired a recruiter.
It would be interesting to see what positions they targeted that at, because I'm really not, I really don't have any experience with recruiters that target this, that type of job.
That, that was my thought.
Management roles all the time. Where recruiter could be interesting is, or another means of reaching people that are outside of our geographic area and you offer a nice compelling relocation expense and initial housing allowance or, you know, a sign-on bonus, something that would take people from other areas of the country, you know, that might wanna come to Uniform Hampshire to work, we'll give them a free, give them a free parka and some warm gloves.
Yeah.
Well, what about a trial and town agreement? Like I think I mentioned it last time, if you've got issues where you know Belmont's got graders, we don't have guys, can we try to broker a deal with other towns to sort of rent each other?
So that was, that was mentioned at a, during a conversation with a couple of towns. The, the issue is that on a normal day-to-day workday, that works fine. But during the snowstorm, it's all hands on deck and if we still only have one employee and Northfield has five, then they need all five of theirs plowing in Northfield before they could come to Canterbury and that's just how it would work.
I just feel like in a seasonal standpoint, you had, like the summer, we can't get somebody to mow the lawn, there's tons of college kids that don't have a CDL or maybe aren't mechanics, they could fill the lesser...
And that's, that's what we have been doing. We have a, we had a college kid mowing for the past three years. We have been fortunate enough that, that when he left in August, at the end of August, that we found another resident that was willing to mow. And he's also willing to plow this winter and he lives in town and he's gonna, he's interested in, in plowing as a seasonal mower too, so.
He's also, he's also setting the boating up tonight, which is one of the things that we don't have.
So I'm just gonna say that, Ken. One of the things that our highway department does that, that, that as, as Bob has mentioned, the value of having a, a town highway department is the, is the, all the extraneous things that they do, setting up for voting, that's been something the highway department's been doing for years.
And town meeting do they set up for?
Town meeting they set up for. You know, moving any, any, if we get a new desk that we have to have at the town office, we ask the highway department people to come up and help us move a new desk in, things like that. There's all, all sorts of work that, that they do that isn't, that you wouldn't say, oh, well, that's a highway department employee that's doing that, but they do. I know we, I've had some inquiries about hiring, I guess, subbing this out, subbing out our highway department, hiring a private company to do the, do the highway department work. And some towns do that, but the problem is, I know one town that does it, they don't even own a shovel. And if, and if this one person that owns this company, if they decided they're gonna retire next year, guess what? Now what's the town gonna do? You know, and that, that could cause a, a big financial headache for a town, not to mention just the work that the people work.
You, you lose all your flexibility, you lose your response capabilities, you, you don't have your own, you don't, and you lose a lot of control because you don't have your own resources, so now it's whatever's in the contract. And then if the contract doesn't renew, you're scrambling around with some firm.
Or somebody makes your contractor a better offer. Or they have a better package.
It's not...
You know, highway department brings barricades down for the, for the fair. They, they, you know, when, when there's a storm, they're out cutting trees to get the roads clear, you know, things like that.
Just set our new flagpole.
Yeah, right, they set up the new flagpole, right, exactly, just things like that, that it's like, okay, well, if we hire a contractor to do this, you think they're gonna come down to your office and set a new flagpole?
Yeah, probably not.
Well, I'm saying, actually, the job is a lesser job, not, not that it's a lesser job, but if you don't require a CDL, maybe you can get one of those spots fit and the person works through a CDL.
That's a tough... Actually, we tried that, that didn't work out too well. The young man got his CDL and then left owing us several thousand dollars.
So we paid for a CDL. So it's like the police, when you hire a police.
And we're, we're a small police corps trying to get our money back, so.
How many of our highway department, are they all full-time or community departments?
Yes, we have, well, we have four, four full-time spots that, that, that we have. We're also down a part-time at the transfer station. We, we, we have been running three part-time people up at the transfer station, went down to two. And, and as Bob said, on this past week, the transfer station manager took his vacation that he hasn't had in twenty years and we had our administrative assistant, accounting clerk up there at the transfer stations.
Willie Wayne?
Yes.
Didn't get the call, I was waiting.
So I, I, I'm profusely... But that's an example right there.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't remember a long time ago, I, Ken Briggs and I split up because she didn't think the transfer station, we had no people.
Well, that would be two highway, you know, would fill in at the transfer station.
And that's typically, and that was, that was when we were, when we were down to only one employee up there, the highway department was helping up at the transfer station.
It's a, it's an essential resource for a lot of these things that people don't necessarily always see. And, but at rebuilding, it's gonna be challenging.
Yes.
I have one more thing that I... Do we have money in the budget to help support the church newsletter or not?
We, I thought we used to, I thought we used to do that, didn't we?
There's some reason I thought we used to do that.
I thought I saw a line for that.
It had come up, but I couldn't find it. They had come up with four miscellaneous lines, I had to be a little bit careful about it, but I thought we did it.
I thought we used a community newsletter.
I think we used it.
And we, the town used it. I thought we used, I thought we used to put some...
Might have been about miscellaneous expenses or something that we donate a couple of other bucks or something like that every year. I'd, I'd have to look, I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah, because it's billed now, it's the town, the community newsletter.
Yeah, there was no reason, there was no reason.
It's not a church newsletter.
Right, there was no reason why we couldn't and we, I swore we sent a thousand or twelve hundred dollars towards it somewhere along the way.
I think the library. Right? The library gives some money.
I'll, I'll, we'll go back and look at it.
They could use it.
Yeah, it's all worthwhile.
Yes, it is.
A lease outset with Belmont and Loudoun Fire Department tie-ins for the ambulance?
We, we boosted Belmont's subsidy two years ago, I think. And Loudoun has not asked for a subsidy. Their call volume to Canterbury is not, not a lot. They cover Shaker Road up to the Shaker Village and then part of Baptist Road.
Clef Pond Road.
Clef Pond Road, yes. So, but, but their call volume isn't such that they've asked for any money.
And Belmont Kennedy covers a lot.
Belmont covers down to Shaker Village and all of Sherwood Forest and so there's a lot, their call volume is, is quite a bit, quite a bit more. So that's why we pay them.
I have a bottom line question. So just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right two places. Looking at the P and L on page eleven, net or revenue income for the year, not to date for the year, is four point one million. And then looking at the draft budget for twenty-five, page ten, grand total with warrant articles is four point zero. Am I right? Those are comparable numbers, so it's slightly down for twenty-five and point four, budget to budget.
Well, and the, the draft twenty-five budget does not improve a lot of things. We didn't, we haven't gotten any of the healthcare or retirement, a lot of the wage lines are blank.
Okay, never mind.
Sorry, there's a lot of zeros.
Good question.
Yeah, I'm looking at the front, front page, the whole executive session hasn't been put in, so, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot that's not in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of zeros. It would be nice if we could find out the only ninety-two thousand dollars savings, but...
Yeah, I...
That's not pretty mine, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of zeros above.
Where are we estimating if the tax increases, what's currently the...
I, I, well, the school portion or the town portion isn't gonna increase a lot. It's, we don't have any substantial increase in that. The school...
Like more eight hundred bucks, I think.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So on a, on a four hundred thousand dollar house, you're looking at a thousand dollars in December. In a five hundred thousand dollar house, thirteen seventy, that's the December, that's just the December bill. So that'll carry... Pardon me?
Half the year bill.
That's correct.
That's the makeup half.
That's the makeup, right.
Then it'll carry forward.
It'll carry forward to next June and then the following December, but that number will kind of happen.
It'll be a correction next December, hopefully, because we will have overspent. What it's really gonna do is impact the people whose taxes are escrow.
Right. The bank is, the bank is gonna say, oh, well, your taxes jumped by thirteen hundred dollars, guess what? You need to put it under three hundred dollars a month then.
And the, the school district, obviously, you know, we're, we're working on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget right now. The school, the two tenants office came in with initial one point sixty-eight percent increase, so they're, they're endeavoring to make the budget as flat as they possibly can. A lot of it, it's an exercise in, it's, it's a learning experience and it's frustrating because there's a lesson that you can actually change. You know, by the time you pay through the, like the bargaining agreement and the teachers, so that's all contractually locked and loaded, and the transportation contract and then your various requirements for state and federal program, there's a whole ten or eleven percent you can actually work on. So who knows what the, you know, there are some positive moves theoretically on special ed for the coming year, but that's unpredictable. Now, they don't have the budget for extra special ed because there is, they do have a trust fund for that, in case someone moves to the district that has, you know, additional needs and goals. You and I have been parsing this budget together at that meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll see, and, and we'll see what happens with, you know, re-tax rate and then, you know, have to see where the school district appropriation lands and then take a look at what, you know, whatever you've underspent, it's, you know, on the current year, you don't have to raise it. Or if the RA makes you raise it, you can just put it right back again by, by adding taking up the numbers or fund numbers.
Yeah.
It's like a shell game.
A little. Left pocket, right pocket.
Oh, better. Better now.
All right, anything else?
All my money, right?
When's the next, uh, meeting?
The first meeting December?
I, I haven't looked. You might want to pick about a budget-only meeting, right?
Like a recession-type?
Have department set, what was that, or do the budget committee together with department?
Department has...
No, not, not in a regular cycle of meetings, on a off-cycle or a different night.
I'm certainly willing to. Yeah, so December, we have, December second and the sixteenth are our regular meetings, so. I, you know...
Yeah, I can, I'm a wage first partner this year.
Yeah. I, I think, I think if, if not before the first of the year, but right after the first of the year is, is something we need to, would be our, our next meeting.
Really, that long?
Well...
A lot of missing numbers.
There's, that's right, there's a lot of missing numbers, there's, there's, there's still a lot of work to be done to promote the numbers that we have. We have to decide on healthcare, we have to decide on wages, those, those things we...
So what's the drop dead date for the budget to be?
February five, or first of February is usually when you have to file...
The end of January, first of February is, is when we say, this is it. I think it's our first meeting in February is our public hearing on the budget and that gives us enough time to, to change things that we need to do.
And when does the, that first meeting, it's not in a, is it in a select board meeting or...
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is February third or the seventeenth, so that's gonna be the third?
Yeah.
Budget public hearing?
Yes.
You're already scrolling up twenty twenty-five.
Can we identify the even early January for getting also with departments outside of the normal cycle? I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
First we get the holiday, this would be perfect.
Okay, yeah, exactly. I think that's for a lot of reasons. So the thirteenth would be off, off, okay. Anybody have any objections?
Is that too tight for you to do the hardware? Ken, is that too tight to finish assembling it?
I'm sorry, did you say December?
No, January.
That's a Friday.
Yeah.
And then what?
Thirteen?
That feels tight to me. Because if anything comes out of that, it's, it's work.
Two days before tax day too. Would, would like Tuesday, the seventh work? I mean, we can do it on, we don't have to do it on Monday, we can do it on any, any day, you know? So January the seventh? I, I would, a week earlier would be better. Okay.
If, if it's, if drop dead is February third, yeah.
All right, so, okay.
So that would be with department heads?
Correct, yes. And I guess can we get, uh, is this available? Is the next question.
I can figure it out. Oh, actually, I can figure it out right now.
There you go, yeah.
That planning board night?
That's what I'm afraid of.
Oh, uh, no, I cannot figure it out right now because we haven't input the twenty-two hundred account yet. So that is a planning board night, but we might be able to get the town hall instead.
Sounds good, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, the municipal?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, right, we'll figure something. Planning board seven? Yeah. Seven P M or six P M. Right, we'll do six, we'll do six, okay.
Set up some tables and conferences for a short meeting. So after nine, we six.
We'll start it. All right, so that, January seventh, six P M, and we'll location T B A for call.
All right.
Thank you all of it.
Yep.
You.
Thank you for the time, Mark. Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Roses, if you leave this, this house is sold. Or it's not sold, it's for sale.
Yeah. What? I just found out this house is sold.
And he made a.
The pictures, the realtor, the house is completely empty.
I don't know, I haven't heard. There you go. Yeah.
Better.
But I write these up the edge of things and then they get each other.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
See everybody at voting tomorrow?
Were you always good voters?
There is, see you there.
Are you coming, Bob?
Be there or be square.
I'll try and pick you up.
I've got my phone number, so give me a call.
Just bring your blue.
Good job.
Yeah, well, like I said.
Yeah, I know.
And I don't like that.
Okay. See you kids.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bye. Both of us.
You didn't send any of the, the budget stuff, did you?
Yeah, I sent all of this last Thursday, Friday, last Friday.
Yeah, yeah, but you didn't say, you said there might be changes, and you were going to.
The only change, um, that happened was in, was this one. So the one that I handed out tonight, this is the only thing that changed. I just, I was looking in the wrong.
I think I got it.
Or I saw the email, I missed the attachment, so yeah, I got it, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
If I miss anything, just let me know.
Friends of Canterbury Central?
They're supposed to be here, let's see.
Yeah, they're supposed to be here, I didn't get anything saying they weren't coming in, so.
Is that Kevin?
Yeah.
To continue on with the budget discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to know next week what your healthcare choices are for the town of the East.
Holy cow.
So, I, I, I think we should at least schedule a, a meeting next week at some point, definitely. To, to look at these, look at these, our different plans, our different options, and to, to make a choice, because that's, we, we have to make a choice by the end of next week, yeah?
By the fifteenth, you have to make a choice?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, a finding word on Tuesday, I think.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So not on Tuesday? I'm available any night next week. Honestly, me too, although.
Not Thursday is conservation commission.
Actually, Beth, you and I have trice-ten-year.
On the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, so it's got to be the.
Wednesday.
Thirteen, that was easy.
Yeah, that was easy.
Great.
November.
Oh, November, yeah, yeah. What time? Five? Yeah.
By the work committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's particularly, so we have to notice that, right? And it's a work session devoted to.
Healthcare.
Healthcare.
And we'll be up in the conference room.
Okay, yeah, same as I, yeah. So is there any homework we can do in the meantime? I, I, so I can give you more options that the Health Trust laid out. Okay. Um, they have a sheet that they gave me, I can make a copy of this and give it, send it to you guys. Oh, I have it, I have it, but it's a.
What time? Did we just say?
Five P M. Well, I'll send it to you guys, it's, it's some sort of sheet that has several different options on it, so. And I'll, I'll, I'll email it to you guys. And that's just the Health Trust, and I can send you the stuff I got from the local trust, so you can look at that. Yeah. Um, if you have particular questions on it, just let me know. Okay.
Yes, definitely, no, I just stole back the things I gave you.
But I don't, I don't see.
I don't know, I have it, I have it electronically, so I will send it off to you. Oh, here it is. So it's going to be a sheet that looks like this, this is the Health Trust. Okay, so it lists, you can see there's, um, this column here is the, is the plan we currently have. And that's, again, this is two thousand twenty-five. Okay, we don't have that sheet. You don't have it, no, no, there's too many options on it, I didn't want to. I just didn't want to confuse things too much tonight, I figured.
We're confused enough.
Yeah, I know. No kidding, so. But I'll send that to you guys, and some of the local trust stuff, I'll send it to you. And questions should be directed to you. To me. And not the other members of the select. Correct. Send it to me, if you have a question on, send it to me, a lot of reply, I'll just look individual. If you have a question on the insurance, and I know, um, I mean, if it's a technical question, um, I can forward that off to everybody. Yeah. If it's a opinion question or something like that, that's something we can't discuss. Yeah. But if there's, well, you know, um, you know, like I say, a technical question, we can, we can, maybe as a.
I mean, it seems, I mean, at the moment, we've got two choices here, um, what does it buy us to look at, you know? If it's surrounding towns, pretty much use these two choices.
For companies?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I mean.
It adds a lot of labor to go look at other businesses.
I can get, um, I can get some information from, uh, people who use the local trust just to see how they like it. They've been around for a while, um, so they must be doing something right. I, and I can get a list of towns that they actually serve and, and ask, send out some emails, that's easy enough to do.
Well, it would be also interesting, as you say, one of the big things is, is do they cover, they must cover, uh, have a network that covers this area, which would be big. But also that being able to offer an H S A, that might.
And that, I, I would much rather have them offer an H S A than H R A.
Oh, sure.
Because it's individually, uh, done versus the town administering it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what we've always had, and, and you've got enough to administer without worrying about H R As too.
Our, our staff is at its limit.
Yeah.
For hours right now, so.
I can't, I can't see, um, support in that, but.
So I'll, I'll get some information on that and, and send it on to.
Okay.
Okay.
Think, that's all I have left on budget stuff right now. Okay. I'm very pleased to have the interaction with the budget committee. Yeah. Absolutely. So I have a couple of other things on old business. The road agent, uh, met with a contractor, uh, about the dirt roads, and we have a proposal, to bring the material in. I'm gonna, I, I looked at this, what I want to do is, uh, um, there's a few things, some edits here I want to make, or at least propose to the contractor, because it's dated today, or dated, was dated yesterday, and I want to make sure that the prices are good for the coming year. Um, so, but we do have, have this in place, for the material.
And that's just material again?
That's trucking, trucking and material costs. So, and then, um, the only other thing was anything on the action item list. Right, I know it's not on the, on the agenda, but I just, I think, uh, the top one was get the bead addresses from Brian, which is done. Um, the new pilot, which is, we're working on. Yeah. Notify the residents of the transfer station oil status, and Beth is taking care of that.
You should have an email in your inbox.
I had it, and I responded to it.
You did, I meant Cal, it's, I sent it as soon as I talked to you.
All right, um, let's see.
Oh, the other thing on that should be also, that I was going to do, is get a, a down and dirty, easy, um, explanation of how our tax bill works. Uh, like, which half are you paying, is it going to be the same in June as now? How does that actually work, because there's so, some people who do not understand that. And when we had the meeting with the school board, I said I would get that done. So I've got an outline, but I want to run it by you and by.
Do you want to use this?
Yes. Please. So I'll run it by you and by, probably by Bob, if that's okay, just to, to make it painfully clear how it works. For even such as myself that isn't sometimes sure.
We, I have on my list publicized that Comcast could be contacted. We could put that in the, in the town email and, and, you know, so, um, it's, I could put it in the next newsletter too, if you want.
Well, it could even go out to, I mean, to next Monday, no, Tuesday is the deadline, right, for the town email?
Yeah, I'm going to be doing it after the election suspension, aren't I?
Yeah.
You want, is it just basically call Comcast?
Yep, 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 call customer service and Comcast.
Yeah, we'll do it right now.
All right.
I'll bring it along on call customer service.
All right.
At Comcast. You have a number there?
I don't.
All right, leave, uh, and to, and to do what, to?
To, uh, see about, uh, getting, you know, access to broadband, have it act on broadband, brought to your house. So the, the only, the only ones that don't have it now, I will, is that list that I emailed to you, which they're working on, they're hoping by the first quarter of, of the new year that everybody will have access to it.
Do we need to do some special equipment for the dump so they can start making phone calls out of there if they need to, or?
They have, oh, you mean cellphone calls?
Well, so we can use the web service to service phone calls up there.
We can set up Wi-Fi up there for, I mean, a cell booster, we can put a booster up there.
Yeah, I think we ought to do that, because right now, I mean, it doesn't matter whether I can call in or not, but nobody can.
Yeah, I mean, they have a hard line up there.
Oh, they do?
They have a hard line, yeah, yeah, they have a hard one, whatever, yeah, but we can put a cell booster up there.
I'm just more interested in making sure they can get out than you do.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Uh, I did get a cost for trees, um, to be taken down at the, this building.
Right.
And I think I emailed.
You did.
So, uh, we have money in the budget for that. Yep. Uh, I have a private budget, so I told Brian to go ahead and do that. I'm still working on the coop, but I get a chance.
Gazeebo?
The gazeebo, uh, I had a, I've left, I left three messages last week, and I finally got a return call that said, I've got two of them done, and I'm getting the rest, working on the rest, and there's still time. Because I, my message was, the weather's starting to go to close in, this was supposed to have been done the last of summer, early fall.
September, early October.
What's happening? And it was, oh, I still got time, so I.
So, um, how long until we're not happy with the amount of time?
How, how do you want me to proceed?
This is for the back of the library?
This is for the van stand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Railings on the gazeebo.
Oh, yeah, meant to talk, talk to you another day. You want me to chat with?
You would like to, yeah.
I'll chat.
All right, thank you.
Dale keeps telling me it's happening any day now, and I keep looking and watching.
He's only, he said he had two of the railings all on.
And there's seven, eight?
Seven.
Seven, that's right, this one's open.
I will talk to him.
Okay, all right. Um.
Who needs to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
He needs that. That's all on my action item list that I have.
The reason I brought up the donation to the church newsletter is we just lost Mark Travis, and I wondered if we can acknowledge him with this as a donation, his memory, or I don't know.
I think it's great, I, I think that, I can't remember who said it, one of you two I think did, that, you know, really, the newsletter is part of the fabric of this town.
Yeah.
It really is, and I've been here, um, ten years now, but I can remember in the beginning how valuable it was, and just introducing the town, and going to. And I, I think for a lot of people, we had a, a couple over to the house over the weekend that have only been here three years, and that was the only place we talked about, was the, the value of the newsletter, so. And we encourage people that move into town, who people that we hear from. Do you get the newsletter? If you don't, here's how to sign up for it, and, and it's a, it's a valuable piece of, of human issues, so.
So they don't even have to sign up to get the paper, and it all immediately comes to their mailbox, to their box.
So everybody gets it.
Yeah.
Everybody gets it.
Yeah, yeah.
Every address.
Yeah, I mean, like, I mean, we have a line, this latest expenses of the executive line, so we can do whatever.
I like that, yeah. Well, maybe we do it at town meeting, huh? So we can, I mean, he's done this for what, ten, fifteen years?
No, five.
He did the newsletter for five?
Mm-hmm, five or six.
Okay.
I did it for eleven.
You'll get recognized.
That's all right, I don't need to get recognized.
I don't fear you.
I'm doing it again. But, no, he did an excellent job and really, um, brought his newspaperman skills to the job, and I think, um, I think that's a good idea, to, to do it at town meeting.
Okay.
Um, along with our other honors at that time.
So we'll include money in the, I, I guess what we'll do is make a donation, and you guys can announce the donation at the town meeting.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait to make a donation.
Correct.
Take the financial issue, it'll be fine.
Correct.
So we'll work on that, yeah.
Actually, let's, I need thirty boys ready.
Are any of those yours?
No, but that one is Scott's.
Oh, yeah, you're always missing one somewhere.
Oh, that one. Done, done.
That is all that I have.
Okay. The, I don't know if Sam has told you, the trees are down at the cemetery, but big huge pines that were up there, so. Okay. Kevin Fife coming in shortly, I hope to finish up that entrance that we've started there, back into the backlands, it's a lot different.
My contractor's going to start the work on the high ground over the library tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Wow, good. The antenna is up at the. I knew that, yeah. And the police department has money, and they're going to replace that in the highway part. Yeah. Tonight was the new radios. Yeah. It's actually going on, as we see, so the grant that we got.
Oh, good.
So, um, so they've been purchased, I believe tonight is programming training, so.
Did the paving get finished on Moral Road?
Yes. Did what?
Did paving get finished on Moral Road?
Yes, yes, I, well, I do so. It's supposed to.
It's, it, there's nothing, no.
Because they, they put a bind, they, they, you claims that put a binder on it, and then they put a top.
And that's done.
They haven't, they haven't done the sides, you know. Oh, yeah, they have a backup of paving on both sides.
That was the.
Yeah, because the highway department usually does that.
And why haven't all the signs on the point of Moral Road, was that, did the state take those all down?
I don't know.
I'm assuming we did.
Disappeared some.
Yeah.
I, I don't, uh, well, the road agent is the only one that can make that decision, correct? On signs, on campaign signs?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because they're up, they're up everywhere else in all the intersections, but that one particular.
One on Moral Road, yeah, so that would be the state.
Okay, so maybe that's.
The state, the state would have probably taken those down, yeah.
Interesting.
Because that's the state.
But, but the, but the, um, triangle at the bottom of Kimball Pond and one thirty-two is not?
It is.
But all the signs.
Maybe they thought it was a safety issue of Moral Road.
Interesting.
Possibly.
But they didn't like the sign?
Well, there were a variety of signs, I.
Is it a variety everywhere?
Yeah, I think it, it was more the, if you, if you didn't know how to use the mirror and were looking the left to come out of moral, all those signs are right in.
Okay.
Your vision. So I, I think that's, that's a definite possibility.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All of us in favor?